Thank you for being quiet. Welcome to the May 12th meeting of the Placer County Planning Commission. And I always get a little apprehensive when I see a room full of people. I hope my fears are not warranted. But anyway, thank you for coming today. A beautiful day outside, isn't it? We'll have our first item here is the flag salute. Flag's in this corner over here. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Curry?
Here.
Mr. Severson?
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Present.
Mr. Moss?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Nader?
Here.
Mr. Ricucci?
Here.
Next, we have the report from the planning director.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the Commission. EJ Avaldi with the Planning Services Division. I just have a couple of calendar items to go over, and then I'm going to have Paul Thompson come up and address our situation with the SEDRA Agency, with the retirement of Michael Johnson, the transition, so I'll have him address during just a minute. The next Planning Commission meeting is, was scheduled for May 26th. We anticipated that the Squaw Valley project would be ready by that date. It's not going to be ready. So that's going to be probably tabled till late June at the earliest. So we're going to cancel the May 26th Planning Commission meeting.
In its entirety, not, we're not having one either here or up there down there.
Right, correct. So the next Planning Commission meeting after that will be June 9th, and that is when we're going to consider the Martis Valley West project, and that will be up here at Grand Lebakan. That is still on schedule. So any questions about those dates? Perfect. So if there aren't any other questions for me, I'll hand it over to Paul, and he can talk about the transition, and we can go from there.
Thank you. Paul.
Good morning, Paul Thompson with the Community Development Resource Agency. Thank you, EJ. So with Michael Johnson's retirement last week, I have been appointed the interim agency director. So I will be sitting in Michael's place while the Human Resources Department recruits for the permanent position. Along with that, EJ will be the interim planning director, so he'll have those duties. So just to kind of back up, when Michael was the community development director, he had two positions. He had the agency directorship as well as the planning director. So it was decided that we'd split those apart at this point and have two different bodies fill that, those two positions. Up in Tahoe, so I will be moving down to Auburn now, so back there. And, I'm sorry, but in my place, we have hired Shawna Breckie Reed, who is a, have a long, long history in community development and planning. She was the community development director for the city of South Lake Tahoe. She lives in Kings Beach, so she will be taking my place up at the Tahoe office. So that's the current status of SEDRA.
When's the sta, what's the timetable? Do you know the timetable HR has for this, for recruitment and maybe a final appointment or interviews? I mean, how long are we looking at her? Three months or six months?
Good question. I know-
They didn't tell you how long the pack for?
They did not. It's going to be a pretty robust recruitment process. I know we've already received a survey here at SEDRA of what we're looking for, what the staff's looking for in a community development director. They're hiring a firm to do the recruitment. So to answer the question, it'll probably be at least three months, maybe more.
Maybe more. Okay, thank you.
Let me see, there were some discussions about whether to go back to different department heads, or whether to have SEDRA director. I guess from what you're saying, decision's been made to replace Mr. Johnson in kind?
So when the new agency director comes onboard, it would be that person's decision as to whether or not to leave the two, leave the individual planning director separate or come back. They're going to wait until that person's onboard to make the final decision. But in the interim-
Well, I was thinking the overall department, including the building and the rest of stuff.
I haven't heard anything about separating those out into individual director departments at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll miss you, Larry.
Was that sincere?
That's sincere. The first four days have been a real challenge so far, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item is public comment, and this is every, every agenda is set up this way where there's, and the audience can bring up items that are not on today's agenda. If they wish to tell us something about something on your mind, it's, this is the time. If not, we'll move on to the next item, which is consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda today, and I believe one of our commission members would like to remove that from the consent. The first item, abandonment of a portion of Bay Street adjacent to Rivera property near Coronation Bay, for further discussion. Is there any other item that anyone from the audience or the commission would like to remove from the consent?
I'd like to see that too.
What?
I too would like to see it removed, yeah.
Okay, well, it's been removed, but we'll, then if there's no other items being removed, we'll approve the consent. Is there motion to remove the remaining items on the consent? Removed in second in roll call?
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, then we'll discuss now the abandonment of the portion of the Bay Street property nearing Coronation Bay, and you were first, so would you like to ask staff a question or make a comment?
Okay, well, basically reviewing the staff report, the determination we have to make is that the abandonment is consistent with the Canadian Bay community plan, and the staff report's very shallow in terms of what the real plan is for the Bay Street portion. I know there's three maps here that are very difficult to put together. There's a map that was produced back in the early 19th century, a map that shows the parcel and adjoining parcels, but it does show that part of the abandonment area is a PUD easement too, and it, it shows property lines actually going all the way down to the lake where the adjoining parcels don't, and it's not real clear where in the Carnelian Bay map this parcel is. In addition to that, the final map that shows the major arterial routes through Carnelian Bay is very small, and you almost need a magnifying glass to read it. But at any rate, I think we do need to have some more information about the community plan, what the plans are for this particular segment of easement, and, you know, where we're going with this thing. I understand that part of it may be to correct an intrusion into the easement, but at any rate, it seems to me we have to look at the whole easement and know what we're doing with the relationships to-
Gentlemen, John Weber, right-of-age in Department of Public Works. This is one, something that's common in Tahoe, it's a paper street, it's an undeveloped road easement in Carnelian Bay, granted on the Carnelian Bay subdivision map. We'd have no active plans to do anything with it, but our requirements are that if somebody wants us to get rid of it through an abandonment process, they have to pay the county the fair market value. That's a requirement in the county code. And in this particular case, this portion of the Bay Street, Paper Street easement is the Rivera's backyard. It's been developed into a lawn area and brush, probably about 20 feet wide from there. It descends down to the lake, and it's pretty much one of the rocky shores. They have requested, we, the county abandoned the portion of the Paper Street that they currently enjoy as their backyard, yet they have to pay the fair market value for those easement rights that the counties, that they've requested be abandoned. They had it appraised, we had it appraised, we haven't been able to agree on a price. So the Riveras, through their attorney, Lou Basile, would like the Board of Supervisors to decide the fair market value issue of the easement rights to be abandoned. County Council has determined that before this can be heard by the board, that your commission needs to make a finding that this request and the proposed abandonment is not in conflict with the local community plan. So-
And you're saying it isn't?
No, the, we, we do, Public Works processes easement abandonments all the time, and we have always agreed, been able to agree on what the fair market value of the easement rights are, whether that's a public utility easement, or sewer easement, or whatever. This happens to be a road easement. So the applicant would pay, would deposit the fair market value with the county, and then we would process an abandonment through the Board of Supervisors. This has been the only case in my 26 years where we have not been able to agree on a price. Normally, if we say, you have submitted an appraisal that reflects a nominal value for the easement rights proposed to be abandoned, we reject it, and, and they either withdraw their application, or we come to some kind of accommodation, some kind of, sometimes negotiated settlement. We haven't been able to do that in this case, and Mr. Basile would like to take this before the Board of Supervisors. So we, we don't think it's in conflict with the community plan. It's, it's a step County Council has, has determined needs to be made by your commission prior to the board hearing.
So if we didn't have this issue of the fair market value, we wouldn't be hearing this at all?
Correct.
I guess, you know, a question that comes up when you just read it on the surface, you know, is this going to be a piecemeal abandonment, or is the county really going to say, well? I mean, does the community plan say that, that this particular easement is no longer needed?
Not specifically, no. No, we make that determination through our processing of the request and, and reflect to the board that it has been determined through our process that it is no longer needed for current or prospective public use. And we just, so we received the request at Public Works, we distributed for comment to anybody and everybody we think is, is, has any interest in the proposed abandonment neighbors, public agencies, utility companies. And in this case, there are no objections to the abandonment of a portion of the Bay Street easement, the Paper Street. The problem is the fair market value. Like I say, we can't agree with the methodology that, that the property owners used in valuing the easement rights.
Have other portions of this easement been abandoned?
They have, yes.
Okay, so this determination has been made before, and, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. That would have been helpful in the report if, because it appears it's a piecemeal, and then you're going to have all the neighbors want to do the same thing. And so it seems like you need to make a decision all at once about-
And that is one of our concerns, is precedent. If somebody comes in wanting a paper street on the shore of Lake Tahoe abandoned, and has it appraised at a nominal value, we're going to be besieged by abandonment requests. We, our position is, what would the county pay to acquire an easement of this type in this location? And I can guarantee you, it would be a lot. The market value of the lakeshore is a lot, and, and that's not what was reflected in the property owner's appraisal, so we can't agree with it. We can't agree with how they arrived at this nominal value.
Yeah. Well, I guess, you know, for us, we're not really looking at the value.
Right.
We're looking at the consistency with the community plan. And that's what, that's what I'm still a little bit missing, I guess.
I don't think it's, something like this is even identified in the community plan. With the Paper Street, there's no traffic circulation proposed, there's no pedestrian facilities proposed at the current time. So it's something that normally is not studied in a community plan.
Can you, I can jump in here, but this is, as John said- This is an uncommon procedure. I think it's the first time in my entire career I've seen this come to a planning commission. However, what I'm hearing is that at least one commissioner would prefer more discussion about general plan policy, and I can certainly work with John and with, with planning staff to provide a more robust discussion of both the history of how, you know, abandonance work, why, why we're here for this one, and you've heard the valuation issue. But there is, there are the general plan policies of public access, for example, circulation element. So we can certainly provide a more robust, if the commission as a whole is not comfortable today acting upon this. I know Commissioner Severson had, had questions also, but I just wanted to pose that out to the commission.
Well, I'd just say, if we're expected to make a conclusion in relationship to the community plan that's going to go before the Board of Supervisors, you know, that's our responsibility. And the valuation part of it will be what they take care of, but, you know, I surely would encourage that we have a little bit more analysis in our staff report that gives us more information as to how this relates to the community plan and how the decision was made to go forward with the abandonment.
We appreciate that. This is the first time this has come this far in this manner.
Larry, Larry, you have a question to follow up here?
I do. I'm kind of amused by the odd shape of the parcel that's in question.
We think it is, I'm pretty sure it is the line between a five, five classification and a 1B classification.
Oh, the soil types, huh?
So they can, the applicants have said, again, through their attorney, that they have a proposed future project for this abandonment area. So if it's a class five, they could probably build something on it, like a deck or an addition.
Does, does the PUD have a sewer line physically in there, or do they just have an easement?
They have a line and an easement that is outside of the area proposed to be abandoned.
Oh, it is?
It is.
Okay, all right. I guess my other question is, council, do I have a conflict to vote on this? Because I represent the conservancy with the next door neighbor.
Oh, yes, you do.
I do? Oh, nice to see you, John.
You're not even supposed to be-
I'll just vote twice.
You're not even supposed to be sitting in the same room, Larry. You're not even supposed to be sitting in the same room. Did you know that?
Is there been an abandonment on the parcels on either side here?
It's not a personal conflict.
Actually, yeah, the conservancy parcel, park to the west abandoned Bay Street. That was at no cost, and it was, we did it a long time ago, but when the park was developed, but with, and we've done it, we did it in Kings Beach too, for the conservancy park, but waived the fair market value because of the public project proposed. We don't do that for private owners.
How long is the actual property that the easement is on?
The Riveras. The underlying fee title is owned by the Riveras.
So they're fighting over selling them their own property, right?
It's, it's a sticky situation, but again, we, Department of Public Works acquires road easements all the time, and we have them appraised, and we pay people for them. So actually, how this happened in the 90s was, we had an abandonment go to the Board of Supervisors that we were going to abandon at no cost. Another item on their agenda was us purchasing a, a road easement for like $50,000, and a couple of the board members said, there's an inconsistency here, you know? So since the 90s, we've been applying the county code across the board that says we will receive fair market value for the easement rights. We are extinguishing, or the county is extinguishing. Whether we paid for it initially or not, whether it was dedicated on a map at no cost, we still require a fair market value.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, go ahead, Wayne.
I was just going to say, in the interest of time, if we're asking for more information before we make a decision, we're basically punting this down the road to maybe June 9th, making a decision on this. So my, my view of rather than exhausting more talk about this, let's wait until we have further information to make the decision. That's what I'm proposing to the commission anyway.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Okay, I second that.
Before, 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 before we go further, I, I wanted to make sure that the applicant or representative is here today that would like to say something.
I don't believe Mr. Basile is planning, was planning to attend.
Okay, well, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure I gave him that opportunity, so-
Could I have a discussion?
Do you have a discussion now before the vote?
Yeah, since, in a sense, you're abandoning just the easement. They own the property, we're burying the easement. The easement is for a road. If we look through the community plan, regardless of anything else, the only thing that could be put there is a road, correct? That easement is only good for a road, it's not for anything else.
Public access.
Public access. Anything else?
I might, I might give you guys a brief explanation of this map. What happened?
Oh, so I've calmed down. I didn't mean to get him so excited.
I think we need an easement.
This, this map is of a hotel site. It was originally developed in the, about 1900s, and this, one of the big parcel in the middle was a hotel site, and these paths that you see, the Bay Street on both sides of that, was a walking path to take pedestrians from the homes into the hotel to have dinner type thing, and that's what it was, the original concept was, because on one, on the other side of the hotel site, my family home used to be. And so, at any rate, it's kind of an interesting old area, but that's where that parcel came from. It was never intended to be a road, it was a pedestrian walkway for people to, that owned the houses and the lot, on those lots, to walk to the hotel for a cocktail or dinner or whatever, and that's, and then it ended up being Sierra Boat Company later on.
What was this map, 1914?
It was around the 1900s, yeah, I'm not sure what it, I don't have my glasses on.
Well, anyway, that's, that's, that's good information.
That's just the history of it.
Yeah, we, we have a motion and a second on the-
I was on the planning commission when we did this.
I guess I would like to just-
You, you weren't there. You could have been, but you weren't before, we have, we have part of the discussion.
I'd like to, I'd like to read it. We have a discussion.
Enough said.
You know, yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying that, you know, if we're asked to make a conclusion, we need to have some basis in the document that we can conclude on, and so that's why I'm supporting that we delay this, I guess, probably June 9th, probably certain.
No, it's eight times June 9th, and then probably the April 11th.
Okay.
Okay.
And then we'll have the information, and we can go forward with it at that time.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions from members of the commission? If not, roll call vote. We have a motion and a second to continue this to time certain at June 9th. Roll call.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
abstain.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yeah.
Mr. Ricucci?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
For the information, additional information.
Can I, I have a question first.
The other item that was on our consent agenda, which was-
We approved.
Was requested to be delayed. We don't have to approve the delay.
No, we, we approved the rest of the consent items.
Okay, right, okay. I thought we were pulling, sorry.
No, we, we approved the other items that weren't taken off there for discussion. Our next item is Chalet Road Townhomes, and we have our planner.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. This is the commission, I'm Steve Yoma, supervising planner in the Tahoe office. As you indicated, the project bringing before you today is the Chalet Road Townhomes project. This is a vesting tentative subdivision map request, conditional use permit to subdivide this project into 18 residential half-plex units. This project's located in the Alpine Meadows areas, you can see from the little area outlined in red. It's sited just, just north of the Alpine Meadows Ski Resort, just to the east, we have some multifamily residential properties, and then there's a mixture of single-family residential properties to the north and extending east throughout the Alpine Meadows Valley. This next slide here just gives you an idea of the proximity to the Alpine Meadows Ski Resort. The project site is outlined in blue there, hopefully everyone can see that. So looking south, you've got the parking areas outlined right here for the ski resort, and then the, the ski mountain up above. The zoning for this particular property is RS, residential single-family, PD planned development of 18 units per acre. The surrounding properties are, are either RSPV, a variety of RSBX, and then there's an RM residential multifamily just to the south. There's also some intermittent open space in between the, the different residential areas there. The existing project site is the location of the Stanford Chalets Lodge. This was built in 1963. The property itself is approximately, I'm actually missing the, the square footage right here, I'll get that in a second, but it's a moderately sloping property. The vegetation for the site, most of the sites actually relatively developed, the perimeter of the property does contain normal native vegetation. The property itself is, contains 14 rooms, there's commercial kitchen, and this, there's a pool that's recently been filled in, tennis court, and, you know, other kind of outdoor amenities to that. The use of the property has been for the Stanford University. It's contained, or provided for weddings and other special events as well throughout the years. What the applicants are proposing to do is to demolish the existing lodge property and create 18 residential half-plexes. There's nine buildings total. Each of these buildings will be on their own parcel as part of the proposed vesting tentative subdivision map. There'll be a common area surrounding the, the properties, which will contain parking, drainage, and other water quality improvements. There's a small area B, which is located between the roadway here and Chalet Road that comes in through here, and then the other parcel is part of this vesting tentative subdivision map is parcel C, which contains the, the roadways that, it's a private roadway, but will serve these new residential units. So the proposed project is consistent with the residential single-family zoning. The base zoning RS would allow for 16 units or 8 units per acre. The maximum density, which would be permissible under the PD ordinance, would actually allow for a total of 24 units on this site. Again, the, the site is consistent with all the provisions within the planned resident, planned residential development section of the zoning ordinance, including open space and parking requirements. The project proposal, so there's going to be 14 of these townhome sites, which will be three stories in height. Basically, there's two models to this. Four of the units will be a two-story in height structure, whereas the other 14 will be three stories in height. All the units will be approximately 3,000 square feet in floor area. This, this project, mitigated negative declaration was prepared for this project, and all- And I'll take a moment to kind of outline some of the different areas of discussion within that document. I've kind of touched on the community plan and zoning consistency, but I'll also add that the project is also consistent with the Alpine Meadows general plan, which actually spoke to envisioning a mixture of different residential uses in this particular area of, of the valley. As I stated earlier, it is consistent with the planned residential development sections and all sections within that section of the zoning ordinance. Some of the other areas that were identified within the, the document that could be mitigated to a less than significant level with appropriate mitigations were things like biological resources. There is the potential for the yellow warbler, I knew I was gonna trip on that, to be present on the site. However, with appropriate mitigation of creating no disturbance zones around potential nesting sites between May first and August fifteenth would reduce any potential impact to that species to a less than significant level. There will be ground disturbance as well as the potential for water quality impacts post-project. However, with the appropriate best management practices and review of the site, then staff's opinion that this will be reduced to a less than significant level. Transportation and traffic, there will be some localized impacts to the roadways as a result of this project. However, with the payment of traffic fees, this will also be reduced to a less than significant level. Air quality, and the air quality impacts are actually limited to the construction period. Again, there's standard practices for construction methods that would also reduce those impacts to a less than significant level. Noise is one of the interesting sections, actually. The noise impacts, there, there will be noise impacts during the construction phase. However, the interesting part about the noise analysis for this project was that it actually identified that the project, once complete, will result in a net reduction in the, the noise to the area, because we're taking away the lodge, lodge property.
They had parties over the lodge.
Exactly, yes.
Not that they're not gonna have parties at the condominiums from time to time, too.
The scale might be a little less, though, yeah. The last item that we took a look at was workforce housing. We do have the ability to take a look at the, the impacts of the existing lodge property and then what the difference would be for the proposed development. And it was determined that there would be no need for them to provide additional workforce housing for the, the project. I will note that this project was presented before the North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council on March tenth. The NIDRAC did provide a unanimous recommendation of approval for your planning commission to approve this eighteen unit residential half-plex. Staff is also recommending the planning commission approve this project. And in so doing, that you adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring plan and approve the vesting tentative subdivision map and approve the conditional use permit for the planned residential development. I should have noted earlier, the conditional use permit component is a requirement for all planned development, residential developments. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, should you have any.
Yeah, well, I'm sure we're gonna have a few. Go ahead, start off.
Let me see, the Chalet Road is, at least to the north is County Road. And when you get to the south, you're on National Forest. And so you may not have an answer right now, but I guess my question is, what's the nature of the road to the south in terms of permits with the US Forest Service? And as well as, there's some abandonment, and there's a road widening that the entrance, the requirements for widening at the entrance actually extend into the National Forest. And so I have some questions about that, as well as the abandonment of existing routes into the Chalet, which cross National Forest. So it's mainly what coordination is involved and what's the nature of these roads. I know the map shows an easement, but the National Forest normally doesn't provide easements. They provide road use permits. So I think at some point in time, we'll probably have to dig into the road use permits to see what, you're smiling, what the, what we're talking about here.
Yeah, I believe Sarah might be able to.
We can discuss that later. We don't have to do it right now.
Any other questions?
Yeah, the issue of the traffic, what does it mean that there could be cumulative traffic impacts? Those could be mitigated through payment fees. How does that make the traffic roll away?
I'm Sarah Gilmore with Engineering and Surveying Division, and we look at traffic, both the near term. And when you have a near term local impact, you have to actually mitigate and fix that impact. But on the more global scale, we also, through CECL, look at the cumulative impacts in the long term, twenty years out or so. And those we have a program for, so that people don't have to individually try to put in, you know, a tenth of a signal or whatever might be their impact. And so that's what our traffic fee mitigation program does, is let everybody pay their fair share into the globally, community-wide needs of traffic.
So it's a, it's a bank account to fix future?
Correct.
You have any other question? Any other question by any other commission member at this time? Okay, thank you. Oh, the, is the applicant or their representative in the audience would like to come up and make their comments at this time?
Applicant first or?
Yeah, the applicant or the applicant's rep, you know, either one. Sometimes the applicant isn't here, sometimes they have a representative coming up, but you're the actual applicant.
No, I am the representative, Chris Nelson, with the Capstone Partners. The applicant, Dave Bunnett, Stanford University, I'm in associations here. Dave's operated the lodge now thirty-five years.
Okay.
And Fallen Leaf Camp for Stanford as well. So I was retained by Stanford to help them work through the entitlement process and will continue on through the sale process. So Stanford concluded that this property's nearing the end of its life. Its best years broke even, and it was time to, to get the property sold. So they will use the proceeds from the sale of this property when that happens to, to see planning and design for another, another family camp somewhere else. So all of our technical consultants are here that work closely with, with Steve and his team in the fire department. I just did want to talk real quickly about the public outreach we, we did, because that's an important part of all the projects that I typically work on. We, Steve Caston recommended we go early to the North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council. So we did get the unanimous approval, but we had done a courtesy presentation before that. I also gave a presentation at the Valley Wide Meeting in Labor Day, where most of the associations and others were able to come and hear about the project. It's been, we've done updates at Alpine Springs County Water District at least four, maybe five times. And then I presented at the, the Chalet Condominiums, which are right next door, had their annual meeting last fall. I went to that meeting and presented. And then had a separate joint meeting with Bear Creek Association, Alpine Estates, and Juniper Mountain Association. So I think part of the reason we didn't get the public comments, it's been pretty well vetted. I don't think there should be surprise, not beyond the standard noticing and, and opportunity for people to speak up. There was a lot of public outreach, so, so we hope that that's, that's paid off. But we're here to answer any further technical questions that you might have. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant's rep here at present time? Okay, just stand by. We might have a question later on. Anyone else in the audience would like to speak on this project at this time? Okay, seeing none, I guess I'll close it back to the public. He did have a good outreach, I guess. Usually we have a couple of people coming up, either pro or con, on, on a project of this magnitude. I think we, we have a, a question that we had for Steve that, or someone says later, we're gonna ask a question, so.
Oh, there are more questions?
Yeah, more questions of staff. Now we've turned it back. Oh, Steve's over there. Okay, I was looking for you over here and I didn't know you.
I'm hiding.
You're hiding. No, you weren't hiding. I just didn't know where you went. Is there question, further questions besides the, the Forest Service and road access ones that you proposed earlier, Richard?
Well, if somebody else has a question.
Anybody else have a question, additional one? It's all yours, I guess.
Okay, well, I'm trying to find the page in the condition use permit, but it seems to me that when we have a a condition use permit required by the county that requires impacts on adjoining property owners or even the federal government in terms of road abandonment and the possibility of needing to get clearance for, for the widening of the entrance way for this road, that there should be a requirement in the condition use permit that, somewhere, that, you know, before these structures are, are built or abandoned, that there'd be some sort of proof that, that they have the necessary permits from the adjoining property owner or agency, in this case, the US Forest Service.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. If I can address that?
Sure, go ahead.
I do have some somewhat standard style conditions I might propose that might address your concern. And it would go something like this. There would be a new condition that would require written evidence of approval from the Forest Service for any work on their property.
Okay.
So I can give you the long version if you so wish. I would also add to condition thirty-five, which is on page eighteen of your packet, and that's your standard list of all the easements and dedications required. And I would add to the end of that list, an off-site public road easement as required for the construction of the plate R seventeen driveway to the satisfaction of ESD, which gives a little bit of wiggle room as we get into improvement plans.
Okay, yeah, that would address my concern.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, shall I read into the record?
Yeah, read the long version.
The long version. Okay, I propose a new condition. Prior to improvement plan approval and recordation of the final map, provide the Engineering and Surveying Division with written evidence of approval from the US Forest Service for all work proposed on US Forest Service property. And then in addition to condition thirty-five, it would be G. Off-site public road easements as required for the plate R seventeen driveway improvements to the satisfaction of the ESD.
Okay, and that would include the abandonment, too? There's, there's two roads currently that are gonna be abandoned.
And I don't understand that the abandonment would be an easement issue. It's a physical abandonment, like a decommissioning. So that no one can use it.
Are they just going to grind up the asphalt? Or I don't know what kind of road it is, but it seems like if they're gonna abandon it, they need to do something with the Forest Service to agree to.
Yeah.
What it's gonna look like afterwards?
Currently, you'd have to ask the applicant exactly what's proposed. It currently only says abandonment, so I don't know what the exact nature of it would be.
Okay.
But the written permission would probably cover most of that.
Okay, as long as you have the written permission.
Okay. Any further clarifications or questions? If not, it, any, any other questions or comments that the applicant would like to make at this time? Okay.
I can.
Make a motion, go ahead.
Make a motion if you like.
Okay, sure.
I would move that the commission adopt the mitigation, the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring plan, approve the vesting tentative subdivision map, and approve the conditional use permit for a planned residential development of eighteen half-plex units, as well as the additional information that was requested that was put into the record. And the findings, right.
And the findings.
Modified condition thirty-five with a new G, and then new condition number sixty-two. Like you said, subject to the findings and conditions.
So moved.
And moved in second. Any further discussion? Not roll call? Kathy?
Mr. Akri?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yeah.
Mr. Rakuci?
Yes, thank you very much. We'll move on now to our, I believe it's our final, our final item.
Yep.
The Tahoe Expedition Academy at Hopkins Ranch. We'll just, we'll just wait a couple of minutes and let the people that want to exit. I think there's some people in the back that are kind of exiting and, and then we'll let our staff continue. Thank you. Okay, let's, let's continue with the item.
Morning. My name is Alan Bruch. I'm the project planner for the Tahoe Expedition Academy, also known as T. We're gonna do a tag team on this particular project. I'll present the project, what the entitlements are, some of the background, and Keith Frankie is the representative for the T project. He will go into more detail of the history of the, the background of the land, as well as the facility itself. So he has a PowerPoint right after mine.
Okay.
There is a sign-up sheet. If people do want to talk about it, please sign in. So this particular project, it is a minor use permit for the facility itself. The, the piece of property is undeveloped. It's a forty-two point one-five acre site. There is a minor boundary line adjustment that is associated with the entitlements. And I'll go into a little bit more background on why that's being proposed. The site is unique. It does, this is a representation of the lots that you'll be looking at. However, I do want to put out here, this is the forty-two acre site that actually goes down a little bit here. And then we're pushing up, the applicant would like to, as part of the project, is to push up some of the boundary line of the lot line. So it affects the larger lot here. There is no development, I will have to stress here, in this location or this location. But it does propose a boundary line adjustment that affects those larger parcels. Some background on the location, it is in Martis Valley. Here's Schaefer's Mill Road. Here's the county line is right here. The airport is right at this location, Town of Truckee. You do have Schaefer's Mill, La Honton down here, and then Martis Camp. This particular piece of property, it has some development in the past that Keith will go into detail on. But there is a map that was approved back in two thousand six for access into a residential subdivision. The applicant is using that same recorded map area to come into this location. There is some history. As you do see, we do have some correspondence have come in. Lot of questions about a deed restriction. Again, I'll go back to the applicant. The county has reviewed that, and there is a modification to that particular deed restriction. We're at a comfort level. The county is to be able to have you guys make a decision on the entitlements for this particular piece of property. There is, down at this location, there's Hopkins Village. There's fifty lots. That's part of a affordable workforce housing component. It is partially developed. There is up on the north end here, you should be aware of, part of the T project. Went through another minor use permit for a temporary location for their school facilities. This particular location is gonna be a permanent site where this forty-two acre is consolidating all of their uses into this location. They're scattered in various sites, Kings Beach, Tahoe Vista, as well as this site I was mentioning here. You do see in your packet, part of our review is making sure outside agencies are aware of this particular project. The airport district has already approved on their end, taken a look at it. They were concerned, obviously, maybe about the height or the glare of the lighting. There's conditions in there. We took it very specifically on dark sky, looking at it for mitigation measures. And the applicant's gonna be working with us as part of the building permit review to make sure that those are shielded. So that's the orientation of what's around there right now. The boundary line adjustment, as mentioned, you can see here, it's kind of, it's almost a like-for-like on square footage. Little bit different, but you do have here, this is the existing forty-two acre site. That's what's gonna go back to this parcel here. And the green, that's gonna come into the campus area. Staff reviewed it. The zoning we reviewed, as mentioned in the back one there, there, this zone is RS, which is residential single-family, allows a school facility with a minor use permit. We looked at this location up on the northern end. It's zoned open space. So with that, we've been talking to the applicant about trying to accommodate them, because they were concerned there is a easement here, wetland preservation easement that's already recorded. They prefer to push away from that additional fifty-foot buffer, which staff agreed on that, because it's pretty, quite a bit of slope here. We don't want to have grading in there as well. It's pretty close to the. pretty, quite a bit of slope here. We don't want to have grading in there as well. It's pretty close to the, to that easement. So what came back because of the orientation here is we pushed it further up to the north. There is no structures proposed in the green area at all. It's only flat work, parking. It is open, as you can see in one of the conditions. It's open to the public during holidays and weekends as well. So the public can park here and access the other trail systems that are throughout that area. So we've been working with the applicant to make that, to make that work, and that is part of the entitlements for this particular project with that lot line adjustment, why you're seeing it. It's, why it's there. The, now, the other action we are looking for is the minor use permit. Typically, the planning commission does not see a minor use permit application. It goes to the zoning administrator. Because of the level and scale of this particular project, we felt it was appropriate to have the planning commission review it. We did take it to NITREC as a discussion item, the applicant did, and we went there as a, for a recommendation to the planning commission, which they did recommend approval on this particular project. Part of the things that we did review on this particular project is, you know, onsite housing. It is in our general plan, as well as the Martis Valley Community Plan, which this is located at. The applicant is proposing as part of the project down at this location, this is the site plan of the construction, there's going to be 16 buildings scattered throughout the site. The access is right in here in the roundabout. Then to come down in here, and this is where the housing is. We've been working, staff has been working with the applicant on that particular one because they do have existing facilities and teachers out there. They're already at their sites. I mean, they're already living at those locations. So there is in a condition here for the housing monitoring plan. We'll have before a building permit is issued, the applicant comes back to us, gives us a little bit more information of how many, specifically where these teachers are. But any new teachers as a result of the project, we need to have the applicant come back to us as part of the mitigation measures to make, ensure that they meet the obligation with the general plan it says in Placer County, as well as the Martis Valley. So that's one of the key components of it, but they did take action that they want to have onsite as one of their options to have, is to meet that mitigation. Other key things I should point out as part of the environmental. Again, you do have a letter from Bridget Barnes. Some of these things I'll be talking about, just, it'll talk about the mitigation measures. There is an attachment there as well. The applicant's counsel has responded, so that is part of your application as well. We do have, as part of the mitigation, we looked at traffic. The applicant will be widening part of the area at this location to allow vehicles to turn right-hand, allow them an option to go quicker speed before going out into the right-of-way with regards to the traffic. Other key thing is the biology. We had to ensure, again, that this area, there are setbacks and buffers in place during construction, temporary best management practice will be installed to ensure that there's no sediment going in there. There is also, as part of the EIR, this project did go through what we call Hopkins Ranch back in 2003. There is an existing EIR that's out there. Staff has reviewed, as well as an addendum on that. Part of the scoping and review, we did see that there's a potential of a deer herd that might be in this facility around this location. Part of the mitigation measures, we are restricting any fencing around there unless it's for safety and security for the, for the students. Other key things is noise. There is an amphitheater proposed right in the middle. There's a little bit of a depression area here, so they're going to be carving out a little bit to allow them outdoor amphitheater. There is a noise study that's part of this application. Staff did review and provide mitigation measures when they can have the amplified sound there, and they have a monitor there, too, to ensure it doesn't go over certain decibels. Other key things we did, did look at was, you know, the biology. There is a report on that indicating that everything is technically within that easement that was originally recorded. So that's to ensure to staff, as well as the public, that that's not going to be affected. Scenic was another key component. You can see a little bit here. Here's the existing, I'm sorry, the buildings are right in here. And here's the existing. And you do have it where they're going to have blended in with earth toned colors and materials. And I do have one more, a couple, oops, a couple more of what it will look like. Right in here and here, and this is off Schaefer's Mill. This is some of the architectural. It's under design phase at this time, but we needed to see it for scenic analysis, see what kind of reflective material, like windows, and make sure the airport district is, is well for the height, making sure it doesn't affect them on it. But this is what the conceptual is, and if they do obtain approval today, they will start designing it and submitting it to the county, and then part of the conditions, as well as the materials and colors are earth toned. So we are looking for the planning commission. This is the, what we're recommending is to adopt the subsequent mitigated negative declaration, the mitigation monitoring program, the approval of the minor use permit for the construction of the facility, which would include up to the 16 buildings, and they're going to phase it over time as money comes in, and again, Keith will go a little bit more detail what his timing is on stuff like that. And then also the approval of the minor boundary line adjustments, since there are some other parcels that are affected by this project. If there's any questions for staff, I'll go ahead and give it to the applicant, and then they'll brief you a little bit more about the project itself, as well as the history of the area.
Do you have one question at the present time?
Yeah. Yeah, it's probably a simple question.
Sure. I like simple.
Yeah. Now, you have a restriction on fencing that's for safety of students?
Yes.
But I noticed on the map that there's a buffer fence. A water buffer fence?
There, there is a...
And, you know, that may be fine, but is there an inconsistency there is what I'm asking?
I guess my question back, is it the temporary fencing, maybe, during construction? Because we do have the best management practices that are installed there. I guess I would have to see.
I'd have to look at the map, but it looks like it's going to be a permanent fence that provides a buffer.
There is for mitigation, there's a I will look at that. Maybe I can have the applicant look at, look at and answer it when they're done.
Let me know if that's temporary, but it looks like it's permanent to me.
Okay.
And that's okay, you know, I mean, I'm just wondering in the language if there's an inconsistency there that needs to be cleaned up.
That's good. Yes, and there is. And actually, speaking of cleanup, there is Condition 64. We've been talking to the applicant. There will be some language changes on that before you take action. I'd like to read that into the record, too, once they do their presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Question, Larry?
I noticed in the presentation that the airport district had taken some action, tentative action, I think it was said, to approve this project. But are they still, are they concerned at all about the crosswind runway that kind of goes over the top of this?
There, the, we do have their resolution. That is part of the packet, so they did take action. They did approve it.
Oh, okay.
But they, we were concerned about those various things, too, to making sure, especially about the height and the glare and the location, the concentration of number of people at that location, and we did defer all that to the airport district, and they reviewed it, went through a public hearings, and they did approve it.
Okay.
There is an easement that goes over as part of the resolution with their approval.
Yeah, I was thinking back about the airport, when we did the conical airspace thing for them as part of the Martis Valley plan. It's kind of like a funnel. It goes up and away, and I didn't know how it affected this parcel exactly.
I would ask the applicant, maybe ask them that because staff was not, because that was a separate outside agency approval, staff, we were monitoring. We just had to ensure before bringing it to the commission that they were okay with it, which they are. But the exact specifics, I don't have an answer to that.
Thanks, Alan.
You bet. Okay.
Okay, the applicant would like to speak at this time and make their presentation, I guess.
Good morning, Chairman Rakuchi and members of the Commission. I'm Keith Frankie, and I'm here on behalf of the Martis Valley Education Foundation and the Tahoe Expedition Academy. Before I say a few words, and I'll certainly make a point to answer your question regarding the split rail fence, so don't, don't allow me to to let that slide by when I, when I get into my presentation. But before I do, and also, Mr. Severson, with respect to the
the airport.
Truckee Tahoe Airport Land Use Commission, I wanted to introduce Mark Kushner, who is our head of school, and Chairman Rakuchi, the, you notice we have a number of members in the audience that have matching hats.
You think?
They are
I'm not that blind yet.
In attendance.
One of these days, maybe.
As a, as a civic study and, and as a public information sort of
Are they getting credit? Are they getting credit for it?
I think they are. Are they, Mark? But I, I just wanted to give Mark a moment to, to talk about the Expedition Academy, and then I'll jump into the boring stuff on the, the project application.
Don't want it to fall over. Commissioners, staff members, members of the public, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Mark Kushner, as Keith said, and I am the head of school of the Tahoe Expedition Academy, as one of the gentlemen said, TEA for short, affectionately abbreviated, TEA. I wanted to briefly give my background with respect to education, a couple sentences, tell you a couple sentences about TEA, and then finish there. So my background, which is relevant, is that I've opened and operated schools on sites and gotten site approvals around the country, including the Bay Area. I am an instructor at Stanford and was interested in the previous agenda item. I've used that facility in the past. I, I teach on school innovation at Stanford in the business school and ed school for eight years. And I've been a state charter commissioner for a decade, the founding commissioner, so I'm sympathetic to some of the challenges of the commission and understand. And later on, as Keith mentioned, we have many TEA supporters, including parents, staff, students, neighbors, and supporters. And actually, just for a second, if you support TEA, would you please stand very briefly?
Thank you. Thank you.
And the people that are here to ask some other questions, I'll have you stand up and make your presentation after, too.
Great. Feel free to grill the students. They are ready for constructive adversity at any time. But with respect to that, as a commissioner, I'm respectful of your time, and so even though we have many people who wanted to speak, we've asked them to limit it to only five or six. And I've been told they have, Kathy told me they have like three minutes. We've asked them to keep it to one to two minutes out of respect for your time. So despite the large turnout, and actually, it would have been double the number of people, but it's school testing today, Terra Nova at the lower school. So many of the lower school staff and many of the lower school students wanted to be here, and so there wouldn't have been enough seats, but they, they wish you well and hope you support this. I should also say that I've skied and hiked in the area. I owned a house for the last 15 years and rented since the 80s, so I'm a huge fan of the area. I think this is a beautiful site for TEA. If you don't already know, TEA is an incredible school, and it is a pre-K through 12 expeditionary learning school. If you don't know what that is, EL for short, it grew out of the outward bound movement, of which I'm a graduate. And the school focuses on three main things: academics, character, and adventure. And we use these things to figure out how to impact the world in a positive way. That's why we focus on academics, impacting the children, impacting the local community in a positive way, and impacting the larger world. We're trying to create stewardship and environmentally sound and respectful students who will impact the world in a positive way. We think this, this project supports that. I should also acknowledge, we have the founder here, one of the co-founders, Taylor Simmers over there, if you could just raise your hand. And I'm, I'm honored to be following in his footsteps, bringing this school to the next level of innovation. We focus on constructive adversity, adventure, and supporting the environment, and we also have, as you probably seen in the materials, supported by and supplied to you by Kathy, many letters of support. I don't know how often you get drawings of trees and hearts, but I hope you enjoyed that, and it was heartfelt. These students cared deeply about their school and about the environment, and so hopefully you had a chance to look at those. As Commissioner Rakuchi said before, you, you have nothing to fear. These students are well behaved and ones that you'd be proud of to be associated.
I'm glad to hear that.
And we have parents here just to make sure.
Okay.
And staff. So to conclude, TEA is a wonderful school. We believe it's a fantastic asset to the community, both educationally, environmentally, and economically. We're bringing in families. One of our parents speaking tonight, her husband's the director of the new Giga Factory in Tesla in Reno and Sparks. We plan to be serving a lot of those families with a wonderful school in, in the area. So I'll conclude there. I'm available for questions and look forward to hearing your, your responses to questions. Please support the various materials and the minor use permit to open this school here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So as a true educator does, Mark was off-script, so I have to go through his couple of slides here. One second. All right. That's okay. So thank you, Mark. Now I'd like to be able to provide some site context, a little bit of history, and to elaborate on Alan's presentation, to give a little bit of background as to what occurred previously and what was approved for the site that was, that was prior known as Hopkins Ranch. And I also have technical consultants available to, to answer any questions, and it should be noted that we, we've also held numerous outreach meetings with the local residents, including members of the La Honton communities, Martis Camp communities, Schaefer's Mill, and, and the sort of the local Schaefer Mill Road corridor. So we've, we've had about a dozen meetings, all totaled a number of site site tours, and in an attempt to, to educate and inform the, the local residents of, of our application. As Alan said, the campus site is located in the Martis Valley off of Schaefer Mill Road, near the intersection of State Route 267. The vacant 42 acre parcel is a portion of Hopkins Ranch, a subdivision, which has gone through to this date, two, two different iterations. In 2003, Hopkins Ranch was a 65-unit project with a golf course, a, a golf course clubhouse, a maintenance building, some large single-family residential structures, taking up most of the site. Then in 2007, the Hopkins Village project was proposed by DMB Highlands Group, the developers of Martis Camp. A portion of that 50-unit subdivision was for mitigation of workforce housing requirements at the Martis Camp community. So those units, and I think there are 10 units that are currently constructed of the 50 existing and mapped parcels. This is the 2003 project, and you'll notice that the 280 plus or minus acres are taking up pretty much the entirety of the 280 acres. This is for reference 267. This is Schaefer Mill Road. There's a clubhouse up here. There's a maintenance building here. The golf actually skirted its way through the Martis Valley and back and under the roadway and came back to the clubhouse, kind of also went around the residential subdivision here right next to La Honton, which is on the southerly border. It's important to note that when this project was approved, there were 65 single-family residential parcels that were approved and consistent with the Martis Valley Community Plan guidelines. So there was effectively with the golf course clubhouse, maintenance building, and all of the related facilities, somewhere north of 200,000 square feet of, of floor area that was, was approved, proposed and approved for this Hopkins Ranch project. Subsequent to that, the Martis Valley Community Plan litigation and settlement was all occurring. And as part of that settlement, DMB Highlands Group, the, the developers of Martis Camp, who owned this property, decided to do a couple of things with it. And I'll just point, sort of for, for reference, so And I'll just point, sort of for reference, so we have the same perimeter outline of the 280 acres here. But what occurred as part of that was that lots 1 through 50 were used for a portion of Martis Camp's workforce housing. All of the golf course, residential lots, clubhouse, golf cabins, were all removed from the project. So effectively, made back into open space. Those were existing zoned open space parcels, and they remain so after this project. The creation of open space parcels A, B, and C, I'll show you on the next slide, as well as the creation of residential parcel D, were also part of that final map. So as you'll notice here, that the parcel in question for the T application is this parcel here, which is called Lot D. These are our 50 Hopkins Village units. This is Lot A, which is an open space parcel, which was conveyed to the Truckee Donner Land Trust. This is Lot B, an open space parcel that was also conveyed to the Truckee Donner Land Trust, which is the subject of the minor boundary line adjustment that Alan referred to. And C is this isolated parcel between the two roadways. So all of those parcels were open space, and they were conveyed to the Truckee Donner Land Trust. Lot D, however, was a residential parcel and was never deed restricted with anything that would preclude anything other than RRS development, essentially. So the matter before you with the assertion of a deed restriction being put on this property, that deed restriction was simply between the parties of the settlement agreement, which at that time were DMB Highlands Group, and the group which received the parcel, the Martis Fund. So the Martis Fund was given this Lot D, and I believe a representative of the Martis Fund is here to perhaps answer any questions you might have about that project. But we found, when we were going through this process, not only at the Truckee Tahoe Airport Land Use Commission, there was a lot of question about the deed restriction, but similarly, at our first NITRAC hearing, which was informational only, there was considerable question. And so we asked the Martis Fund to show up for the subsequent NITRAC meeting to provide further information on what they're doing with the proceeds of the parcel. But the essence of the deal is that the T group came to the Martis Fund for the purchase of Lot D for the school project. It's important to note, as Alan mentioned, an RRS zoning allows for a school use, and so it's a consistent zone type. It does require a minor use permit, however. And I think with good reason, the planning staff decided that it would be best to bring this to your commission for consideration, given the complexity of the project. I won't get into the specifics of the buildings themselves, unless there are any particular questions about the facilities. But I think it is important to note a couple of things about this plan. First of all, Alan mentioned that we are proposing the widening of this portion of Schaefer Mill Road to allow for a left turn lane to come into the project. That's within the road right-of-way of Schaefer Mill Road, which is a privately-owned roadway which has been given, I believe, an irrevocable offer of dedication to the county, but it has not yet been accepted. So it's currently a private roadway that's owned by the parties in the Schaefer Mill Road corridor. So we are proposing a turn lane that would come in to allow for the left turn motion into here. We're proposing an acceleration lane, which would allow people to accelerate onto Schaefer Mill Road, and a deceleration lane, which would allow people coming from Lahontan or Martis Camp to slow down and turn right into the project and to not obstruct the traffic flow into the campus. The other thing of note on this, and if you have any specific questions about the open, or I'm sorry, about the minor boundary line adjustment, I'm happy to respond after public comment, if you like. But the important thing to note about this, and it kind of shows best here, this is that wetland preservation easement, which comes, which is in this location, and then that wetland, you can kind of see the rest of it going into the Martis Valley. So an important part of that swap was that we gave additional land right adjacent to the minor boundary line adjustment, where the wetland actually becomes a real wetland, to provide greater setbacks to the wetland, which would be owned and managed by the Truckee Donner Land Trust. In exchange, the Truckee Donner Land Trust gave us, or is proposing to give us, that little section here, which allows our roadways to snuggle up right to the property line there, and allows us to give more distance to the wetland and the topography that is part of the wetland. And Mr. Johnson, with respect to your question, I think we have been in consultation with the Martis Fund, who has some stipulations on this property and the protection of resources on this property, one of which was the addition of a split rail fence to provide a more of visual demarcation of where the setback area begins. So we have voluntarily increased the area of setback to that wetland preservation easement in conjunction with the Martis Fund members, some of which, Mountain Area Preservation, for instance, had some notable and some good comments about how to protect that area. So I think we're certainly sensitive to the fact that this split rail fence would not in any way preclude the movement of the deer migration corridor, but if, for clarity's sake, we need to make some adjustment to, I believe, what would be condition of approval number eight, to allow for a split rail fence, I think that's a good suggestion.
Yeah, that would just prevent confusion in the future.
10-4, yeah. So the T project has consulted for about the last year with a number of technical consultants, including biologists and traffic engineers, noise engineers, civil engineers, many of which are here today. If you have more specific questions that you'd like to ask them, I'm not prepared to get into their wheelhouses. The campus design was planned to be considerate of the site constraints and complementary to the existing environment. So I think, as you'll note from our conceptual renderings, we've tried to break the structures of the school up so that it's not a monolithic building that has more commercial or non-residential scale. So we've really tried to use the site, to use the topography, existing trees, and to really kind of fit the buildings within the site to the greatest extent we can. One thing on this land plan that's notable, and part of the, in addition to the turn lanes on Schaefer Mill Road, you'll note that there, I'm sorry, that there are a series of roundabouts. So you come in on a 300-foot roadway, or driveway, to a roundabout, and then to a road system that feeds to the lower school here, and then feeds to the middle school and upper school down here, and then another roundabout at the bottom to turn vehicles around, and an EVA, or an emergency vehicle access, down here to Hopkins Village. The important thing about that is that the design of the roadway system within the campus allows for the queuing of vehicles that are part of the otherwise impactful pickup and drop-off of students in the morning and afternoon. So one of the ways we were able to manage the flow of, not only the flow of traffic, but the queuing of traffic, was to do so within the project. So it's notable that we have the capacity, both parking and otherwise, to get all of those vehicles off of Schaefer Mill Road, onto the site, and then to pick up kids and to get them off of the site safely. So all of that has been considered. You'll also note that the majority of facilities are up here on this shelf, which is kind of on the upper side of the project, in terms of elevation, and that the only real structures on kind of the southern portion were the high school here and the proposed dorm, we have a maintenance building here, a dormitory, and the three faculty residential units. I guess maybe the middle school is right here. The other thing about this site is that there are compatibility zones, which preclude overflight for schools. So you'll note that there are, there's really no structure. So Larry, to your point about overflight, the Truckee Tahoe Airport Land Use Commission does not allow any buildings, kind of in, actually, I think the line kind of goes through here, in this zone. But really, the only intended use of this area is for a passive recreational use with hiking trails and sort of outdoor areas that the students can sort of engage the site and have their outdoor learning activities. The other part of the Airport Land Use Commission compatibility, and it's important in that the structures themselves were broken up so that the occupancy of each structure was consistent with the Airport Land Use Commission requirements for density. So they have both a per-building and a per-acre density requirement, which I think speaks to the matters of that particular runway, which in the event of an accident would, I guess, limit the exposure of inhabitants in any of those structures. To conclude, the initial study was prepared by the county. A subsequent mitigated negative declaration was prepared and distributed by the county, and that 30-day period has gone by. We have received one, I think essentially one letter of opposition, and we have been in communication with those people who have posted that letter to us, and we're working towards finding some form of a resolution. So we're hopeful that we can get there, and that we have addressed their concerns, not only project-wide, but we really feel it's an important part of being a good neighbor as a school, that we are sensitive to the residential neighbors who purchase in these communities for good reasons. So we're, to let you know, we are actively talking with that group. The impacts have all been reduced or mitigated to less than significant, and we are in agreement with the conditions of approval, I think with the exception of one, which was a sort of a last-minute addition to the conditions, which I believe is only applicable to projects in the Martis Valley area. And Paula or Alan could probably respond more with more knowledge than I. But it's condition number 64, and we would suggest the addition of one sentence. It's numeral number one, and I'll give these to Kathy to... And I think staff is also aware of the additional condition. But what we are asking is that it allows, so essentially, what the condition requires is payment of conversion of impervious areas that are developed with impervious surface towards open space preservation in the Martis Valley area. Now, my first couple of slides were all about the 220-plus or minus acres that were provided and conveyed to the Truckee Donner Land Trust as permanent open space. And it's our belief that we have possibly, that that condition has already been satisfied for this property in spades, and that we would simply like to have some ministerial discretion for the credit that this project is responsible for with respect to condition 64. So that's our proposed language.
Okay, thank you.
And with that, I'd like to reserve a couple of minutes to respond to public testimony.
Sure, that'll be fine. Yep, thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Of course.
Alan had mentioned that there was going to be a phasing to this project as funding is provided, and I'm curious as to what part of that project you anticipate starting first, and what kind of infrastructure is going to be there to help support that initially?
Understood. Yeah, that's a good question. The, essentially, well, we have a set of improvement plans that's currently being reviewed by ESD right now at our risk. So we, because of the timing of this project, and because we, well, as you all know, construction in Tahoe, I mean, there's, it's fast and furious, and it's over before you know it, and it's snowing. So we are very interested in starting this project as soon as we have an approval, free and clear. So we've gone through the improvement plan process. Those improvement plans include all of the roadways, including the off-site improvements for Schaefer Mill Road, the driveway, the roadways, the roundabout, the area down to the EVA, and this little spur here, as well as the pads for a couple of the buildings. We're not exactly sure which buildings we're going to start because of the sort of tenuous nature of approvals and entitlements. We'd like to be able to construct or to start upon completion of the improvements, which would begin this summer. We think we can conclude those improvements and get acceptance of those improvements by the end of this construction season, so in the fall. The buildings themselves, we now would anticipate that we might do one or two buildings and get the building permits in the queue to begin construction in the fall upon completion of the improvement plans and the improvements. And to probably start with, call it 20,000 square feet plus or minus of classroom buildings for students. We are currently, this is a K through 12 campus of approximately 350 kids, and I think, Mark, we have, what, 160 now, plus or minus? So the hope would be to get all of those kids together into kind of a series of buildings, but on the site, and then to work towards or work around the process of fundraising for subsequent buildings. So there may be some other things, like you'll notice there's a sports field up here. You know, a sports field's a great thing to have for kids, so, you know, even if we had one building and a sports field, you know, it might be something like that. But the bottom line on the improvements is that we would, we're obligated to constructing those improvements that are sufficient for the entirety of the campus.
Up front.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other questions? Are the applicant?
Yeah, I have one question. Yeah, one thing that came up in my mind, and I didn't take the time to look for it, but right along 267 is a nice new bike trail. Have you planned to tie onto that for your campus in any ways for the convenience and the use? Because that, the Martis Valley trail system is a beautiful system.
Oh, it is.
It would be great to have exposure to for the kids.
Yeah, we've, it's definitely on our radar. Right now, there's a parking lot, I think it's right up here someplace, and that trail system kind of comes through here, and then it starts winding around through there. These, as I mentioned, this parcel right here is owned by the Truckee Donner. is owned by the Truckee Donner Land Trust, so it's not within our control. But we would certainly like to work with the land trust on establishing some trail connections.
Access, yeah.
It's not part of our project application, but we certainly think it would be a benefit to the area.
Well, I just, you know, if in any way you could get that and bring it through your project and out the bottom as part of it, it would make a nice enter- not only for you, but for La Honton and others.
Couldn't agree more. Yeah, it's-
And maybe they would be willing to support you on that. You know, that would be in many ways.
We think it would be a great amenity.
Yeah, anyway, that's just thought, and I think it would be a tremendous improvement for the project as a whole.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'm going to ask for a representative of the group or a group that they may have questions concerning this project that are, I hate to say, against the project, but that have questions, still question, unanswered questions. Is there a representative here for that group? No one in particular? Okay. What? Okay. Well, then, at this time, I think we said that there were several students that wanted to come up and- and I appreciate, limited to one or two minutes, considering we don't have a timer here, but I got my watch out here. But if you limit it to a minute or so, you'll be way within the standard. Just your name for the record? And if you put your name there, that'd be fine. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Jennifer Frashay Karen, and I'm a parent at T. I have two boys, a first grader and a fourth grader. I'm also a T board member. We've been active at T since the doors opened in two thousand and eleven. We came from Truckee. We came to Truckee from Michigan due to a business opportunity and allowed us to live anywhere. We came for one year, and we've been here for five, primarily due to T, but also because of the experiences, the friendships we've made, and the quality of life that Truckee affords. And our story is not unique. Coming from the Midwest, I am in awe of Tahoe's beauty and the majestic mountains as I drive through the Marthis Valley on our daily commute to T's current location in Kings Beach. It never gets old. I never take it for granted. And I'm forever grateful that our path led us here. I feel very fortunate. This unique and inspiring beauty truly complements- sorry- and enhances the T learning model. It inspires our children, teachers, parents, both consciously and subconsciously daily. This is one of the things that makes T so special. We understand this. We respect this, and we are fiercely protective of this virtual classroom. However, the most special trait to me about T that I have experienced watching my children, other parents, teachers, and board members, thank you, Mommy, is T's ability to take you out of your comfort zone time and time again. This is done in a way that only when we are taking a thoughtful, unexpected risk, like starting a school or attending a startup school, trying something new or unique or experiencing something inconsistent with your norms and ideals can. This zone of discomfort challenges us to contemplate, consider, collaborate, communicate, persevere, and trust. Once we persevere through this transition out of this zone, we are more confident, more compassionate, understanding, grateful, proud, and gained perspective and gained perspective skills. Or, yeah, more perspective. The skills, these skills and mindset that all the T students and any age and level can benefit from. I suspect we are here today because many are out of their comfort zone. I truly understand this and ask we communicate, we collaborate, and find compassion for all perspectives. And most of all, we trust. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you like to be next?
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Rebecca Kassekert. My husband and I moved here to Truckee a little over a year ago with our three children, ages four, six, and eight. They are proud T students in pre-K, kindergarten, and second grade. And we chose to move here from San Francisco. And we had many places that we could move to and chose Tahoe because of its beauty and because of this amazing school. Recently, our family had the opportunity to move back to San Francisco, and despite the pull of friends, family, and a wonderful school there, we chose to stay here in Tahoe because of T, because of what it offers our family, because of the education our children are receiving, and because of the strong moral compass that they are receiving at the school with their family, their friends, and their teachers. And I can't say enough about this wonderful school and what it has done for our family, but what I also think it is doing for all of the families at T and for really the community at large. So, thank you for taking the time to listen to us today and consider this important project. Thank you.
Could you sign? If you don't sign in now, when you're ready to leave, just sign in and-
Thank you.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Melanie Cook. I'm a founding teacher and the lower school director at the Tahoe Expedition Academy. And I have been asked to speak to you about our academics, character, and adventure, the three pillars that are inherent in our program. And I thought, you know what? The person who could do that better than I could would be Anna Chekki. She's one of our third graders, and she has a presentation that she'd like to give to you.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Anna, and I've been a T kid for five years. T has changed me as a person. Before I came here, I didn't even know what a character trait was. Now, I know a lot more. T helps me connect to nature, which I love. T pushes me out of my comfort zone. For example, when I was in kindergarten and I went to Woodward, to the cliff drop, I was so scared, but other kids pushing me in a healthy way helped me face my fear, and I jumped. I had a great time, all because of other kids. That's how T helped me become who I am today. One of my greatest strengths is in math. I went from easy addition to long division. T helps me set goals, and I said to myself, "I want to get really good at math." I practiced, and it finally achieved my goal. T is giving me chances to use math in the real-world way. For example, we were studying trees. We measured trees in board feet and how much money the trees were worth. We also used the clinometer and measured the tree's D B H, also known as diameter at breast height. T has affected my character by giving me challenges to complete by using creativity, collaboration, perseverance, responsibility, and more. For example, the challenge hike. The challenge hike is a seven-mile hike where we spend the whole day helping help the precares students to get to the fire lookout. You have to use perseverance, stewardship, and collaboration to complete the hike. No matter how many times we do it, it's always a challenge. At T, we go on adventures to push kids out of their comfort zone so they will learn nothing is too hard. Our class went on a field study, and we had a challenge. Well, a couple of challenges. First, we went to Donner Summit and did some tricky snow shooting over a creek and up a hill. And then, we had another challenge. We had to hike on uneven ground blindfolded to pretend we were snowblind. It was very challenging, but we all persevered and did it. After that, we hiked up to Maiden's Retreat and had a great time playing in the snow. T helped me change the world by giving me chances to help the world by going to Project Mana, cleaning up trash, and more. Recently, our class went sugar pine planting. We spent practically our whole day planting sugar pine seedlings with the precares. It felt great to help the earth. After that, we jogged to the bus and went back to school. T is great with helping the earth. My five years at T has helped me acknowledge who I really am. If I set goals, I know I can achieve them. I know I am a steward for the earth, and I can solve problems with creativity. I learned I can face challenges and that nothing is too hard for me. At T, I know there is always an adventure waiting to be found. I'm looking forward to continuing to grow at our new campus.
Thank you. I think the best part of that was after all those activities, and they jogged back to the bus. I mean, what a value of youth.
Well, it's challenging to go after that, and I did a great job. My name is Courtney Walpe, and I have two boys who have been at the school for five years since it started. I truly appreciate this opportunity to share my enthusiastic support for the proposed site use in order to allow the children of our community to continue to grow and develop as engaged, passionate, and knowledgeable stewards of our region and to continue to attract full-time residents to this area. The curriculum at T is deeply connected to the Tahoe-Truckee Basin. Each year, our students focus their academic work on projects that are fundamentally derived from the immediate surroundings. When my younger son, Xander, was in kindergarten, he became a mountain yellow-legged frog expert. For those of you who don't know, the mountain-legged frog is a native species that is on the brink of extinction. Not only could he competently explain the life cycle, mating practices, native habitats, but he could articulate the current threats and advocate for what we can do to ensure that this species doesn't meet an untimely demise. This fall, when my sixth grader explored the impact of fire in civilization, they grounded their research and work by first understanding the impact in our local region. They learned about the brave hotshots who respond to fire threats. And they ultimately created not only their own weather prediction kits, which they're currently donating to a local elementary school, but they raised money and collected supplies for local victims of a recent fire. As a parent and a twenty-year resident of this community, I am sincerely moved when I hike with my boys that not only can they describe the local fauna and animals and geography, but they can discuss the ways that we can protect this beautiful place that we call home. Through their work at T, they have become stewards of this land. T has fostered in them a sense of responsibility, not just to themselves and to their crewmates, but to their neighbors, whether those neighbors have pine leaves, boggy eyes, or two legs. They aren't passive consumers of this region. They are crew. They know that they are responsible for preserving and protecting this place that they love. For the past year, I've had the pleasure of supporting admissions at T, responding to inquiries from families who are considering a move to this area, but will only do so if they can find an inspiring educational option for their children. The proposed site use is unquestionably a significant draw for these families. I urge you to give the current and countless future students of T this amazing opportunity. Thank you for your time.
Could you sign in there? You didn't get a hat. How come? They ran out?
It doesn't fit me. I need to get a new size.
There you go. You can't be speaking with-
There we go.
There you go. Now, you're in uniform.
My name's Logan LePlante. I'm a sophomore here at T. And my family moved to Truckee with my little brother and I so we could attend T. We both travel a lot for competitive skiing, and I travel a lot for public speaking. My little brother, he actually just made the U.S. ski team. He's right there. And T works with us so we can do what we love and travel and still keep up in school. So far, T has really blown me away, far exceeding my expectations. The teachers are amazing. Just this week, I learned how to screen print. They didn't teach me that, but they gave me a timeline, resources, and support to learn it. And that's just something we do like every week. The T future vision is exciting and can make Truckee stand out even more as one of the best places in the world to raise your kids who love the mountains, appreciate the environment, and want to do awesome things with their education. Most of my friends live in the Bay Area, and their parents are second homeowners or have ski leases up here. And they travel up here every weekend so their kids can compete on the ski teams. Almost all of those kids wish they could go to school here full-time, and they're pretty jealous. But this winter was the first time I heard more and more of the parents consider moving here full-time after hearing about T. I think that's a really, really good thing for our community. Thank you.
Falls under the category, build it and they'll come, right?
Hi, I'm Sean O'Toole. I'm the treasurer of the Marthis Valley Education Foundation, which is providing the funding for the school for the initial project. There's just a couple of things that I'd like to add to what Keith said. We did a very extensive search for properties. Not only was this the best property we found, it was the only. I worked with Paul Thompson. I worked with Tony Lashbrook. I reached out to the school district about extra land. I worked with the local public utility districts about extra land. Rather than just looking at land that was for sale, we actually knocked on the door, basically, of every owner of a parcel of more than ten acres that was appropriately zoned for a school. This is the only site in the region that works for T. Also, we are up against an incredible time issue in that our current leases, our current temporary use permit, expire at the end of next year. In order to get the school on site by September two thousand and seventeen, we need your approval today. And we need no appeal. So, we're definitely at your mercy here. You know, any delay from here at this point will cause the school a full-year delay and a pretty substantial dilemma in going and finding temporary facilities. So, I'd urge you, please, to give all your consideration to approving this today. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else? Oh, someone else. One more. Oh, two more. Okay.
Well, my notes say good morning, but it's about midday.
It is, exactly. Five minutes till.
Good day, Chair Rokucci and fellow Planning Commission members. My name is Nikki Riley. I am a member of the Board of the Marthis Fund, and I'm here this morning representing the fund. And thank you for this opportunity to comment on the proposed T project. The Marthis Fund is a collaborative project of Sierra Watch Mountain Area Preservation and D M B Highlands Group, formed in two thousand and six for the purpose of conserving open space, managing and restoring habitat and forest lands, and supporting workforce housing and related community purposes in the Marthis Valley and greater eastern Placer County region. A copy of the PowerPoint presentation to Nitrack at the meeting we attended last month, describing the fund and its work along with a frequently asked question sheet, has been distributed to all of you prior to this meeting. That's my understanding. The Marthis Fund's role is seller of the property to T for the proposed academy you are considering today. As the seller, Marthis Fund supports the approval of the proposed project. Proceeds from the sale of the property to T would be used to fund affordable housing in the region in consultation with the county. As part of the negotiation, the Marthis Fund created a number of conditions to support the sale of the property to T. The one I'm most proud of is the scholarship program. This would enable the school to enhance its diversity, its inclusion, and its opportunities. It's a scholarship program providing two-hundred-thousand dollars every year for as long as the school is located on its site, which we hope is a very long time. I have two sons who attend the Sierra Expeditionary Learning School, which is a charter school in Truckee. It's within the school district. And I can say, as the parent of those students, they receive an incredible education. Their education involves being in the outdoors and experiencing the world in a way that many kids don't have that opportunity. So, I believe this school is a wonderful opportunity for that, as well as with this scholarship program, it will enable students who would never have that opportunity, who are part of the standardized school system, an opportunity to engage in a different way, in a unique opportunity to expose them to the world. So, I think this is really great. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the sale, regarding the Marthis Fund's involvement. And again, I thank you for this opportunity to comment.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Alexa Soller, Executive Director of Mountain Area Preservation. As many of you know, we are an environmental advocacy organization, and we consider ourselves stewards of Marthis Valley. We've spent the last twenty-nine years, since nineteen eighty-seven, being an organization to review development proposals and be advocates for good planning and environmental protection efforts and advocates of workforce housing. With that, we did meet with Keith, as he mentioned, and the applicants, to review the proposal and to really understand how this proposal will be sensitive to the site, knowing the Marthis Valley is such a special place. We have made comments. We've made suggestions, mitigation regarding scenic vista points in the valley, preservation of natural resources at the site. And with that, of course, the applicants have been very willing to work with us and ensure good planning and protection of those resources. We did review the mitigated negative declaration and submitted a letter to the county to illustrate our due diligence in reviewing this project and also advocating for the creation of those mitigation- mitigation efforts to ensure protection of the wetland preservation easement and also biological impacts regarding the loyaltown verdii Truckee deer herd. And even with that, we worked closely with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. We followed up with them to better understand what type of use is happening on the west side of Marthis Valley, and they ensured us that there's actually limited use due to the nature of fragmentation development in the valley and, of course, Highway 267. So, with that, we feel this project, this application, is very consistent with the Marthis Valley Community Plan and really the charter that we have put forward for environmental protection efforts in the valley, and we support the T proposal. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask you...
Whoa, whoa, whoa. We have a question.
We've just been given a letter from the town of Truckee in addressing an issue that I know is probably near and dear to your heart. It's about workforce housing. And I wanted to ask you, from your perspective, their concern that maybe this diminishes, this project may diminish the opportunity for more workforce housing. What's your perspective on that?
So, we actually, I might have Nikki from the Marthis Fund come up here, because we have been in consultation with the town of Truckee and Placer County about this. Part of the issue that the Marthis Fund has really had with this site is that there's been a lack of interest of anyone coming forward to develop workforce housing at the site. It's been out there. The Marthis Fund was the one to implement the deed restriction, which, as you know, was a private settlement. But the lack of connectivity to bus stops, services, all of those things that really are attractive for workforce housing is just not really applicable to this site. If you're familiar with the rail yard in the town of Truckee, we've been huge supporters of that because there's going to be a 77-unit workforce housing project there at the rail yard, which is right in the downtown core of Truckee, where there's going to be access to bus services, jobs, a future grocery store, all of the things that really make it attractive for a workforce housing developer to pursue a project, especially when you have to apply for tax credits. So, we feel that this is not a net loss of workforce housing and that this sale to T will allow the Marthis Fund to actually put more dollars into workforce housing programs. You might be aware that the Marthis Fund started the down payment assistance program with Placer County, where we've worked with the county to give $700,000 to families who do not have the resources to make a down payment for a home. That program alone has had the impact of having 15 families get into existing housing stock. Of course, I can't speak to exactly what the Marthis Fund will do with the sale of the property to T, but our goal would be to work on a workforce housing project with either the county or the town of Truckee. Obviously, everything's really pending on their proposal. If it doesn't, you know, if the support of the proposal. So, that's kind of where that lies. And I don't know if Nikki wants to add anything else from the Marthis Fund perspective as a board member, but we feel very confident that the Fund will use the sale of the parcel to implement future programs or an actual project.
Okay, thank you.
Right here.
Anyone else wish to speak at this time? Oh, okay. For a second there, I was going to close the public hearing, and I saw you coming from the back of the room there, sir.
My name's Jim Morrison. I've lived in Lahontan for about 12 years. I recently moved to Lake. I'm on the airport board, and I just wanted to say I'm in support of the school at this location. I think they've done a great job doing their due diligence, and I hope you guys agree with that.
Okay, thank you very much for your support. Okay, at this time, not seeing anyone else jump up, I will close the public hearing, a part of it. And rather than bringing up, I don't know if too many questions haven't been left unanswered, I'd like to turn it back to the commission members to ask either the staff, our staff, or the applicant a specific question. Go ahead. Would you like to start, Wayne?
If you're drawing 64.
Yes, if you go to number 64 in your packet, down the last paragraph, that's page 18 of 22 of the conditions, page 30 of the entire packet.
30, the handwritten, I know.
Yes, 30 on the handwritten. It is the...
I don't have the 30.
And once you're there, I'll mention when everyone's there. Last paragraph, the second sentence down after applicant "may," and that's when you see the attachment that's there. The number one, "May either," number one, "provide sufficient evidence that the project's contribution to open space preservation has previously been satisfied to the satisfaction of the county Planning Division," or, number two, and then it continues with the written portion that you do have in your packet, "elect instead to propose," et cetera, et cetera. So, that's the recommended change that staff has on there.
Are you in support of that?
Yes. The other condition, too, Mr. Johnson indicated, condition eight, we would say, because of the fence, we would say a split rail wood fence up to four feet in height permitted and allowed for protection purposes along the recorded wetland preservation easement, if that's in satisfaction with that, too.
Okay, thank you.
Those would be the two amendments, and if the applicant's agreeable to that as well.
We agree. Thank you.
You could have said that without getting up.
I want to go back to 64 just for clarification. Because I noted that the parking lots are considered open space. And so, I don't know if parking lots are really the type of open space that this is addressing.
Yeah, so, on that note, what was considered, and I think Alan referred to it, we plan, and I believe it was conditioned in...
15.
Number 15, to allow for the signage of all of those, all of the parking that's located within that open space area, because that, well, first of all, the facilities, parking facilities, roadways, recreation areas are allowed uses in open space. But further, we agreed as a school, when those parking areas were not being used, that that parking could be signed for the general public to be able to park there Saturdays, Sundays, and federal holidays, to use that parking, which is in somewhat demand, especially on weekends, to access passive open space and recreation uses in the Marthis Valley, including the Marthis Valley Trail System, which is often, the parking lot is full on the weekends, so.
Okay, then.
No, we have...
I see you're talking two different things here. The zoning, the open space zoning is, I think, what Keith is addressing, and that's what Alan also mentioned, that that swath of open space is involved with the boundary line adjustments. The uses are those that are permitted within the open space. And this type of parking, because it's also open to the public, is a permitted use within the open space. I think what Commissioner Johnson was asking about was about condition 64 and perhaps how the open space would be satisfied under condition 64, if I understood your question.
Yeah, normally, and I'm not saying it's not in this case, but normally, the county looks for projects to provide public benefit, and if open spaces is what they're looking for.
Right. This is a little different. There was another lawsuit back in the day, and that was on the Marthis Valley Community Plan. And there was a settlement for that that involved the, I may not have the title correct, the Open Space Implementation Program became an appendix to the Marthis Valley Community Plan. And as an outgrowth of that implementation plan, it was the imposition of a $5,000 per this particular fee to ensure that we were implementing open space. And what the applicant has suggested, which is appropriate, given the passage of time and the various open space areas that have already been set aside, is the opportunity to work with staff to see if that's already been satisfied. So, this is simply in compliance with the Marthis Valley Community Plan. It's a very specific thing about collecting the $5,000 fee or finding out if they've actually satisfied that already. So, that's the genesis of this condition, and I hope that answers your question.
So, this is saying it's been satisfied?
We don't know. But what we've done is to ensure that we're consistent with the community plan and that implementation program, is we've proposed this condition. What the applicant has proposed is a minor modification that staff is supportive of to see if perhaps this has been already satisfied in whole or in part, and to work on that and with that respect to that.
Okay, so that's the second, number two, is a...
It's the number one.
Or the one?
Yeah, the number one insertion into the condition.
Oh, provide sufficient evidence.
Yes.
So, that hasn't been done yet?
Correct. Yeah, we just would like to allow for administrative discretion of that, the fact that we may have demonstrated that.
Already.
Yes.
But you're not, we're not quite sure yet.
Well, it...
Well, you think so, but...
Part of the transition of the planning director and some issues related to consistency pre and post-project got a little sticky there.
You still got to look at it a little bit. Okay, well, thank you. Let me see, I just have one more comment, too. This is not a substantial question, but at any rate, I notice that you're, I usually look at the EVA. Looks like you're dialed in with the fire department, and you have a DOCS box and all that kind of stuff. I just wanted to be clear with the school that you understand that the EVA is for emergency vehicle access, but it's also for emergency evacuation access.
Correct.
In the case that the school needs to evacuate quickly, that would become a very... So, when you install your gate, make sure that you have the key to the car. So, if you have to evacuate, you can make that decision to do it.
Yeah, and the Truckee Fire District is very, very key to all the whistles and bells. They call them the gizmo gates.
Yeah, and I can appreciate that. I just highlighted it for you.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other question by the commission members here, either staff or of the applicant?
I'm glad to make a motion.
I don't think we have any other questions.
I would just like to note, for the record, one of the commissioners also mentioned we received a late letter, but we distributed it to you from the town of Truckee regarding this project.
Right, right. Okay, is there a motion?
I'll be glad to make a motion. For our consideration, I would move that we adopt the subsequent mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program and approve the minor use permit to allow the Tahoe Expedition Academy project. And three, to approve the minor boundary adjustment and the changes related to 15 and 64, that we accept those changes.
Was it eight?
Was it eight? Excuse me, not, excuse me, I thought it was 15. And to also accept the findings. Anything else? Okay.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further questions or discussion? Okay, roll call, please, Kathy.
Mr. Curry?
Hi.
Mr. Setterson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Rokucci?
Yes, so the motion is carried, and there's appeal process is next 10 days, and what is saying, don't clap yet. And it's, it was something like $575. I don't have it in front of me.
$550.
$550, too. Usually at Auburn, we have it listed right there, but anyway, the motion's approved. I want to make a few just comments myself. First of all, I want to thank everyone for coming out and also the outreach that you did. I think that's really important because it's an important project. But also, I appreciated, being from Roseville, I appreciated the extra information about how we got to this point on this piece of property. And also, I'd like to tell you that I have four grown children and two, my two boys that are in their thirties and forties now, they went to a K through eight private school in Roseville. So, I kind of liked that approach. They had a real good education. And I have two, a niece and a nephew, that are out in the county, and they go to a school actually small, but it's a public school, but because it's way out in Sutter County, it's a K through eight with like 200 kids again. So, I think the fit is good, especially the way you've separated the different classes and stuff. And again, I want to thank everyone for not attacking the podium here. You all were well behaved, and thank you all for coming out. Now you can, yeah, now you can clap. And that should conclude our meeting. Thank you for coming, and have a good day.